Okay, I call a meeting to order if you could please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, welcome to the Town of Riverhead Planning Board meeting. Today is Thursday, June 3rd, 2021. This is a bit of a hybrid meeting for us. It's the first meeting that we've actually had the public back in our audience here and people calling in from Zoom. So, welcome back, everyone. If you are on the Zoom call, if you could just mute your mics until you want to speak and then we'll, we'll address anyone who wants to speak at that time. First item on the agenda tonight is Forty-Eight Cromer Avenue LLC.
Good afternoon, or good evening, everybody. Jefferson Murphy, Building and Planning Administrator. This has been a long road getting to tonight's decision. You have a resolution for preliminary site plan approval. The site plan, Marty has done a nice job in addressing almost all of the issues that have been addressed since the staff report from last year. We heard the presentation at the last meeting, or two meetings ago, excuse me, about the fire safety analysis. We have the fire marshal report. That was one of the last big issues that were remaining. So, the only thing you have before you tonight is a resolution to approve it for site plan.
Okay. What changed in the resolution, Jeff?
The only change from the resolution, there were two, and you should have a copy of the... The last one was revised as of today. One was, no propane shall be transferred from or any adjoining properties regardless of property ownerships. The other one had to do with, we got in the revised or updated title report, there are a number of easements on the property, drainage, telephone, electric. All of those need to be identified and shown on the map. And the town attorney would like an attorney opinion letter as the owner is a corporation. And this is red.
Okay. I just have a couple of questions. I had, I don't know if it was to you, Jeff, or the fire marshal at one point, had asked if the EPA Risk Management Forty CFR Part 68 for both propane storage was used. And I never got an answer.
Okay, that was not to me. I don't even know what that means.
Okay. And also, I think the last time the applicant was on, there was a reference to a footage distance, I think it was between three or four hundred feet that was required that the tanks not be near a building from another property or something like that.
Okay, again, that would be, that was, I did not get a copy of that question. I don't know if Craig Zidick is chief fire marshal.
I think one of the experts who spoke mentioned that.
Okay. Marty Soluski is on the Zoom tonight. Maybe he could answer that? Or Ray Dickoff is in the audience. The applicant is also with us in person this evening. So maybe one of them can address it.
Okay.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to mention that those, those issues were discussed at the last meeting and they were all conform to a bend in compliance with the NFPA fifty-eight and New York Fire Code. So they are code compliant. Two things, small, practical to the record of application. Two things I'd like to add to the record.
I don't know.
Jeff, he's, you're talking over. Sorry, Marty.
Two things I'd just like to add for the record of the application. Subsequent to the site plan hearing that we had, we've seen a cyber attack on the infrastructure of energy reserves in our country. That really emphasizes the fact that there is a need for adequate safely stored LP gas on the east end of Long Island. So this is a much-needed facility in terms of national security, in terms of them being able to satisfy and serve their clients during the winter if there was another cyber attack and the pipeline got cut off. It is important to have these quantities of safely stored reserve. Secondly, I would just like to add for the record that per Mr. Murphy's site plan resolution, which is for you tonight, I would like to add the fact that we're actually very glad that Mr. Murphy himself handled this application. Not one of the staff, even though the staff is very qualified in Riverhead. But Mr. Murphy handled this himself as the Director of Planning and Building in the Town of Riverhead. All of the items that were of concern have been addressed. They have been mitigated and they've been deemed to comply with the requirements for approval. That included Engineering Department, Building Inspector, Fire Safety Analysis for NFPA, Fire Marshal, including consultation with Fire Chief, New York State DEC, Suffolk County Department of Planning, New York State DOT, including no impact on the roadways, Riverhead Highway, and the ARB. So there are no outstanding items that are required to be mitigated at this time for the site plan approval. You are aware of the board members, the hard look under secret and under review is really the engine of the process. What we've gone through here is a very hard look. It's been four years. So we've gone through a quite a hard look here. And the resolution in itself represents the written reasoned elaboration that is required for this board to provide that backs up your action. So you have a site plan prepared by the Director of Planning that is the written reasoned elaboration in support of this resolution to be approved tonight. We look forward to your vote this evening. Thank you.
I just...
I think Frank, the owner, I think Frank may want to say a word if that's okay?
Well, I did have my question. It was stated at our last meeting about the distance from the nearest building. I, for some reason, I remember three or four hundred feet that was mentioned.
I would ask Gary, I'd ask Gary Newsom to chime in on that. He's the, from Hills Propane. But I will emphasize that all of those dimensions are issues that are compliant with all requirements. Gary?
So the only thing that I disagree with that you said, Marty, is that the fire department signed off on it. I don't, I don't believe the local fire department did sign off on this.
The fire department had this application for months and they did review it with Craig Zidick. And actually, we had an email with their comments attached.
I don't believe that to be accurate, but nonetheless.
We have the email. I'll forward it to you if you'd like.
No, I saw it, but it, he didn't meet with the chief specifically on this project.
He has the chief's, he has the chief's info that he forwarded to us by email. I have that email. I will forward it to you tomorrow.
Okay. Who, who was going to answer the question on the footage?
Mr. News, Gary, you're muted. Gary, unmute. Gary, you're muted.
There we go. Sorry about that. The code requires for this size container and this installation be fifty feet from a building and fifty feet from a property line. And it meets that code.
I, I thought I had heard that a neighboring property or something, it had to be three to four hundred feet away?
I think that discussion was about, about some other buildings that were potentially in that area. I think that was the discussion that was going on. I'll have to look at, it was something about, there was some publicly things that were at a distance away, but we met that requirement too. I'm kind of searching through that document as I speak.
Gary, I think that had to do with something, had to do with the creep of, of secondary fumes, something like that, if I recall?
Yeah, it was something to that effect. Again, I'm trying to search through a sixty-three page document, but I know the hazard distance was four hundred and ten feet. I think that's the number you remember probably. And was there, was there any occupant, high occupancy structures within this four hundred and ten feet? One being educational, institutional, and other assembly, and there was none?
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
All right, so I just, you did note that you're going to be leasing parts of that building to, to other businesses for, for use, correct?
That is correct.
So that doesn't apply to the leased space in that building?
No, no, because they're not assembly and institutional and the other uses that Gary had mentioned. There's specific requirements in the code and specific uses that that applies to. And none of them are met here or none are required here. We meet the code completely. Thank you.
Do you know the uses?
Excuse me?
What uses are there? Who's going to be in the buildings?
The uses are, the owner has, wants the space there and the other uses will be industrial rental spacing and storage.
I guess, I'm not sure if that falls under assembly, but, okay.
No, it does not.
We'll leave that to the professionals. So, the other thing was, Jefferson, you didn't prepare this site plan. You reviewed it.
I reviewed it. I did not prepare the site plan. No.
Any other questions?
Yeah, actually, I did. I, I guess Jeff and the Department of Law, were there any legal reasons or any issues that have not been resolved or that outstanding that would prohibit us from voting?
I cannot attest to legal reasons. I can attest to the town code. They have complied with all the town code requirements, including compliance with the Fire Marshal's review of the fire safety analysis. So in terms of legal, the only legal part at this point that we're reviewing is the, the title report, which was reviewed by Laura Calamita, paralegal from the town attorney's office, and the comments that I read as conditions of approval as being revisions to the resolution. Those were her, her comments back on the title report. So that's it. And I don't want to speak for Dick, but that was it for, that I know of for the legal part of it.
Anything, holding us back there?
Do they have anything to go?
Was there, I, I can answer questions, but I'm not sure there's a question.
Is there any legal reason that we couldn't or shouldn't vote on it? You know, any legal issues?
Has, has anyone raised a legal question? I mean, I'm assuming the uses.
No, I'm just, I want to know before, if it comes to a vote, if it's ready.
I'm assuming it uses a valid use and it's permitted in his own and the... Are you, is there something that I'm not aware of?
No, no, I'm, the general, general question of whether it's ready to, any reason we shouldn't or couldn't vote, that's all.
And Dick, you had a question? And this did get a special permit from the town board, so... And it was issued in egg deck by the town board.
There's twenty-four new, there's twenty-four new propane tanks on or near that property? Does it have anything to do with this?
I would have to, I have not been by the property in, in a couple of weeks, so I'm not aware of that.
I've been by it a couple of times.
Okay. I would ask Ray Dickoff, who's in this evening, do you know anything about propane tanks being on the property?
Good evening, Ray Dickoff. I'm going to be the builder of the project and I also work for the company. Yes, those tanks that are there are empty propane tanks. They come and attract the trail. We unload them there and then we move them out and they're buried underground for our customers. So they, they do get offloaded there and then we move them out to individual job sites throughout the east end. So, but those tanks are empty storage tanks at this time.
They're empty.
They're empty, yes.
And where are they going when they're filled?
They don't get filled until they're buried underground. We bring them to a job site, we install them underground, then they get gas put into them.
They're getting buried within this application?
No, 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 no. They go to a homeowner's house and we hook it to their house, whether it be a pool, a house heat, or anything. They're not used on that site at all. They're only there temporarily because they come in from out of state.
They're about as long as this table. I mean, they're...
They're about eighteen foot long. They're longer than that table. They're a thousand gallon tanks.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? You related to this application?
Yes, from the owner.
Okay. Just identify yourself, please.
Hi, board. Frank Fisher. I'm the owner of the LLC and I just wanted to introduce myself so you could put a face with the LLC. I'm a local businessman. I've lived in Riverhead my whole life. I was born in Central Suffolk Hospital and I went to school from Phillips Avenue and graduated Riverhead in ninety-seven. I've been working, I bought, I came to the town board originally on a different piece of property to build this plant and they recommended that I buy this property on Cromer to get this, to do this. I'm in the propane business for many years and I'm growing and I need this plant to expand my business and to, to grow. I need this plant. Right now, I can't, all the big companies are buying up the plants. They're monopolizing it and it's getting harder and harder to buy it. So I need, I need my own plant. I, I don't want to move. I want to stay here. I want to build this to stay here. I have two kids, seven and nine, and I want to stay here on the island. I want to build this plant. I want to build it once. It's going to be my own office, my own plant. I'm going to be there for the rest of my life. So I would just ask, I've been dealing with this permit process for over four years now through DEC. I've been paying out of pocket for all the soft costs, the engineering, the mortgage payment, the, I mean, you name it, everything. And I just, it's just getting to be a burden. And I'm just hoping and asking for your yes vote tonight so I can move on to the next step and, and start going for a building permit. We've met everything that we can met. All the Ts have been dotted, all the Is have been dotted. I have experts on staff willing to answer any questions. And that's, that's what I want, just want to introduce myself. We're happy to answer any questions. It's just me. It's not a massive corporation. I have no partners. I have no, it's just me. Just, just a local businessman trying to stay here, trying to expand my company.
But it is right next door to another major storage facility.
Yeah, I agree with you, but that's, that's why we picked that area because that's what it's zoned for. And we're right off the expressway, so the trucks come right in and out. We're not burdening the town with big trucks. We're coming right, we're a mile away from the expressway. We meet all the codes, all the setbacks. We, we meet everything. That property was specifically purchased for this reason. Because we, because it was the, it was the perfect piece of property for this.
Which way are the trucks going to come in and out?
They'll come right in from the expressway down Main Street in Cromer and then right back onto the expressway.
So West Main Street?
Yes, yes, between expressway and, and Cromer. Yep. And even my delivery trucks, even when we go, because the majority of our business is on the forks, mostly the south fork. So we're going to come through the expressway and probably now one eleven onto Sunrise. I'm not, we're not even going to go through town and Main Street and the traffic circle. It's, it's too much, too much. We'll go around and coming back, we'll go around because that's, it's perfect for us. It's perfect, right off the expressway. That was the whole reason for that piece. We had another piece on Pulaski Street that was the same zoning, but the town recommended they would prefer it to be at this property and that's why I pulled the trigger.
Who from the town recommended that?
We had a meeting with, it was four years ago, so it was, it was members of the town board. We, we had a preliminary meeting with them and they, it was them who recommended that I buy that piece of property. It would be more favorable.
So you're currently in the propane business today?
I'm currently in the propane business. Been in for years.
What's the name of your company?
To this gentleman, I'm sorry?
What's the name of your company?
Six Three One Propane.
What is it?
Six Three One Propane.
Six Three One.
Mm-hmm, Six Three One Propane.
How many, how many years are you in business?
Over seven. So to, to your question to those tanks, sir, those thousand gallon tanks, they're stored, but they go to our customers' job sites. So we, we specialize a lot in new construction. So all the homes out, out east in the Hamptons are being built, they're new construction, and they get thousand gallon tanks and they run the pools and they run the, the heat for the house, the fireplaces, the dryers, the stoves, all that type of stuff. So those tanks you see there, they go out to the job, they get put in the ground on those job sites with an excavator and then they get connected and filled and leak tested and that's what they're used for. So they have nothing to do with the facility here. They're just, just stored, empty stored, don't get filled there. Nothing.
Thank you.
I'm happy to answer any questions, if anyone has any.
Yes, Jonathan Brown here, representing the Riverhead Fire District. May I speak?
Sure, since you're on.
Okay. My name is Jonathan Brown. I represent the Riverhead Fire District. I just want to go back through the timeline again because I think it was a little cloudy in the representation here. On October sixteenth, twenty twenty, I wrote on behalf of the fire commissioners, requesting information about this proposal. We received no response. I wrote again on April twenty-sixth of this year, requesting information regarding this proposal and received the fire safety analysis on May sixth, which was the date, I believe, of the last hearing, and received the March twenty-fifth version of the site plan after the fourth review by the fire marshal on six one. The statement that the chief of the department was included in conversations on this project are inaccurate. The chief of the department asked on two occasions what the status was of this project and was told by the fire marshal that there has been no change. There was no substantive conversation whatsoever. The chief's involvement in this matter was nothing more or less than responding to a questionnaire that was provided by the applicant regarding manpower considerations that needed to be completed at the fire department. The district is the governing body for the fire department. The request was made by the fire commissioners directly to the town and to the fire marshal and we did not receive a response. The fire commissioners would like this application to be delayed until they have an opportunity to review the documents that have just now materialized so that they can do a proper response. This application may or may not be appropriate in, in terms of planning. We are not in a position at this point to say that we have had a meaningful and a thorough review of this application because of the inability to deliver plans to it. Now, there was a set of plans that was delivered to the assistant chief. When he went down and picked it up, it was an earlier iteration of that plan. It was not the March twenty-fifth version of the plan. It did not contain the revisions. It was stated at the last meeting that we attended on this application that the tanks were rotated. On the plan that I have reviewed on March twenty-fifth, it does not appear that the tanks were rotated in such a way so that the tanks are aimed away from the entry points where firefighters would be required to enter the facility. So, given that circumstance, the commissioners respectfully request that this application be put off until they have had an opportunity to provide the meaningful insight and response to this application. Thank you.
May I respond? Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Well, I, I do understand the fact that Mr. Brown doesn't understand the fact that the tanks are rotated and are away from the approach from firefighters because he's an attorney, not an architect or an engineer. They have been rotated slightly and they are absolutely at ninety degrees from the approach. So I do understand the fact that he's not an engineer and he wouldn't be able to read that document. Well, you know, all due respect, you're not an engineer either, so let's not go there, please, okay?
I would, I would like to also add one other thing. The Board of Fire Commissioners is a elected board that represents a special...
All right, Marty, I'm going to cut you off here because you don't have to lecture us on, on the local fire department. We know, we know how they're structured and we know how, who they report to and, and who the chief reports to. They, they report to elected boards. So if you have any other comments, please give them. We don't need a lesson on, on the fire district.
My comments, my comments are directly related to the comments made by Mr. Brown. I want them on the record under the review process and the hard look, sir. May I continue?
Yeah, we don't need a history lesson on, on the fire district and how they're structured.
No, but I think you might need some information. Maybe some of the other board members would benefit from it. I don't know if all the board members are aware of the fact that a fire commissioner is not required to be a member of the fire department or a fireman. A fire commissioner could be a housewife, an accountant, a civic person.
What does that have to do with this application?
What it means, sir, is that they do, are not required to have any fire safety training in, in any capacity. Therefore, they're not an involved agency on this application. They are five members of the community that have stated their opinion. Also, this, the, this application has been duly noticed. Public signs have been up there and we've had a public hearing and a comment period. So the fire district has had their opportunity and quite frankly, this has been sitting in the chief's office way back as far as October. So that is on the record as far as all of the intercommunications. But I just think, you know, it's important for you as a board, when you're, when you're voting on this, to look at, you have five people that are not required to have fire training under...
But Marty, every single, every single elected commissioner is an ex-chief. So why are you comparing them to a housewife? You're comparing the ex-chiefs who are now commissioners to housewives. That's not accurate.
Well, you know what? They're governed under Town Law one seventy-six, sir, and the forty items...
They're certainly not housewives, though.
Not, one of them includes fire training under Town Law one seventy-six. That's what they're governed by. They're not required to have any training on fire, on fire safety. Therefore, if anything, they're an interested agency and quite frankly, the letter that Mr. Brown wrote is the letter from five community members, nothing more. Because they are not required to be involved with fire safety. As opposed to our, our person who is the, actually, I could say this on one application. The foremost person in the world that wrote NFPA fifty-eight is our expert, okay? He is totally trained and fire commissioners could be a housewife. They do not require any training in fire safety. So those are the two sides of the equation that you have when you're...
Right. And, and the fire safety analysis did not consider the propane next door, did it?
It doesn't have to, sir, against the code.
All right. Anything else? Thank you. Any other questions?
Nope.
We're going to move on.
As far as the, the fire, the district's attorney, the remarks that he made. I personally went to the firehouse four times. I'll say four, it was probably more. A dozen phone calls without courtesy of a call back. For four months, I waited to get answers to questions that we, we were giving them a, a copy of our fire safety analysis where there's one, one chapter that we needed their information and their input in. I didn't get it. The letter Mr. Brown wrote, he did not write to the planning department. He didn't write it to, to any of us. He wrote it to the town board. The town board has already issued a permit on this property. So they're the ones that did not respond back to Mr. Brown. That's where his letter went unissued. The fact that he wants more time, time is not going to change the zoning. Time is not going to change the fact that this meets international building code, the New York State Building Code, NFPA fifty-eight. All the time in the world, they're not going to change those things. This project meets every single requirement that is necessary. It received the permit from the town board. It received the permit from the DEC. The Suffolk County Planning Commission waved off on it, as Marty said. The DOT waved off on it. There is, time is not going to change the fact that this project one hundred percent meets every single code and meets all the zoning in this town. So there is really no, you could talk, you could wait for months and months and months and only cause a hardship to the owner of this place. But nothing's going to change. It meets every single code.
Well, it's on the agenda for a vote tonight.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, if I could just respond, both the letters, Brown here again, both the letters that I wrote were copied to the fire marshal, the town board, the building department, the planning board, as well as the chiefs and commissioners. So I think everybody was aware of the commissioners' interest in this project. By the applicant's own admission, the fire safety analysis was not available until late February. And I, I have to underline that, we did not get a copy of that fire safety analysis until May sixth, twenty twenty-one. Nor did we get a copy of the March twenty-fifth plan until it was delivered to me earlier this week. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And, and just to add one thing, my client, my client and his attorney and everybody were at the commissioners' meeting yesterday and the commissioners did not ask them a single question regarding this application. They sat through the entire fire board commissioners' meeting, which is a public... They sat through the entire fire board commissioners' meeting, which is a public meeting. They were there, and they were not asked a single question about this application, thank you.
I'd like to say one more thing to Mr. Brown. Uh, the fact that he received the fire safety analysis in February, that that may be. We, after four months of not getting an answer from the fire department, gave the fire safety analysis to the fire marshal minus that one chapter, bec- and we told him, it's because we cannot get an answer out of the fire chief. Now, evidently, the fire chief that we were dealing with was not voted back in this year, or he chose not to run, and it's a different fire chief. But at any rate, the fact that they didn't respond back to us, we shouldn't, that's no fault of ours. We actually turned in a draft to the fire marshal with chapter eight left out of it, because they did not provide us with the answers.
All right, we're gonna move on to the next, uh, item on the agenda, which is Browning Hotel Properties, LLC for a minor subdivision.
All right, good evening, board members, Greg Bergman with the Town of Riverhead Planning Department. Uh, the planning department has received a two-lot minor subdivision application, which proposes to subdivide an existing six-point-nine-six acre parcel and create two individual parcels, one being four-point-two-one acres, the other being two-point-seven-five acres. The subject parcel identified as Suffolk County Tax Map Number six-hundred dash one-eighteen dash two dash three-point-one is a six-point-nine acre parcel located on the north side of Old Country Road, just east of the terminus of the Long Island Expressway. The property is presently improved with two hotels, one being the Marriott Residence Inn, which is a hundred-and-thirty-one-room hotel, as well as the Hilton Garden Inn, a hundred-and-fourteen-room hotel, along with related parking, landscaping, lighting, and drainage improvements. The property is accessed via a two-way driveway from the north side of Old Country Road, which is accessible via westbound traffic on Old Country Road, and it only allows westbound egress onto Old Country Road. Subject property is located within the Destination Retail Center, or D R C zoning district. Uh, the application proposes to subdivide the existing property and create two parcels. Uh, the proposed subdivision boundary runs roughly down the center line of the main driveway, which can be seen on figure two, page two of my staff report. Uh, the, there are a number of easement areas which are identified on the map. Uh, one is an easement area for access, sanitary, sewer, and water, uh, and that which is a thirty-three-foot wide easement, which runs down, runs down the center of that driveway between the two hotels. And there's also a easement area for parking and utilities. Um, the applicant did submit a title report with the application, uh, but it did not include a complete covenants and restrictions search, so the exact details and language of those easements are unknown at this time. Uh, in terms of parking, per the town's parking schedule, hotel rooms, hotels require one parking stall per guest room or suite. The current configuration in relation to the proposed subdivision would result in a hundred-and-seventy-two parking stalls on the western parcel, which is the Hilton Garden Inn, which requires a hundred-and-fourteen by the code, and would require seven, and would, uh, create seventy-seven parking stalls on the eastern property, the Marriott Residence Inn, where a hundred-and-thirty-one are required. Although the entire site is, uh, compliant with the town code requirements for parking, provisions should be made to recreate a reciprocal parking easement and agreement between the two properties. Uh, although I do note that this may already exist when they have that parking easement, uh, but we don't know the exact details of it because we didn't get those, that language yet. Uh, similarly, a cross-access easement must be created if it doesn't already exist between the two properties. Um, again, this may be in effect already, uh, we just need to get a complete C N R search for the property. Uh, I do note that the property is currently owned by the Town of Riverhead Industrial Development Agency, and is leased by the owners. There's a series of agreements to permit the construction of hotels and the operation of the hotels. Uh, as such, prior to approval of the application, uh, the applicant must provide an owner's endorsement from the Riverhead I D A. Uh, the application will require approval from the Suffolk County Department of Health Services, and the application has been referred to the Suffolk County Planning Commission. Uh, at this time, we have a resolution prepared to classify the action as an unlisted action pursuant to SECR and to assume lead agency and issue a negative declaration, as this will allow the applicant to begin their health department applications.
What's the purpose of splitting this?
Uh, that, I, we have, uh, Mr. Lee Browning here, he represents the properties, I would let, I would defer that question to him.
Uh, good evening, I'm Lee Browning, I own both hotels. I, I don't, I didn't hear what your question was, so.
I was just curious why you're you're splitting it, uh, something by you.
Uh, well, happy wife, happy life.
Okay.
Uh, I'm, I put five to six days in at the property right now because of the two hotels. I just turned, unfortunately, seventy-seven. A little bit of pressure at home to ease up, I'd like the option of being able to sell one or the other. And, uh, that's the reason of the subdivision, the, the reason for the pu- parking. Generally takes two to three years to ramp up any hotel or any type of a catering e- event. We did it early. We, we have had problems with parking, we have had valet services there. Our biggest concern, people block the fire lane, they park wherever they wanna park, and they double park. When you ask them to move, it's like telling me to wear a mask, and I don't wanna wear, wear a mask, it starts a row that's unbelievable. And I've even had people park on fifty-eight, um, which is, which to me is not a, not as big an issue as blocking the fire lane. I guess we're, we're, uh, we're successful in in establishing what we set out to do. And, uh, I, I think it's warranted, it, it will, by subdividing the properties and, uh, if I look into the future, if I, if I were to sell, I probably would sell the larger of the two, which is the Resident Inn, which has the functions that bring in more people. I wanna make sure that everyone has adequate parking, everyone has cross easements, and that we don't create a problem legally later on. So, uh, we actually started this action, uh, not with, not with the town, but this was before the pandemic. When that hit, uh, ob- obviously, things got much better because we didn't have any people traveling. If you look at last weekend, it was the single busiest weekend that Hilton has ever, ever had in their existence. I see that happening probably not, not as much, but certainly, it's gonna create a severe parking problem for us in the future. People wanna get out, uh, more so than ever before. If I had my way about it, we would have done this before the pandemic. Honestly, I didn't have, I didn't have the forethought of the money to, to begin it.
Okay, thank you.
Have a question for Mr. Brown.
Oh, sorry.
Few years ago, you made an application to us up to, um, on the, I guess it would be the western side of your parking to put a ramp so that people could get across.
And a light.
I did.
And whatever happened there, obviously, it's not there, so what, what's the story there?
Uh, I did, um, it was the intersection, that's what you're referring to?
Yeah.
The town would not give me the, uh, permission to have maintenance done on the traffic, uh, signal. So, past supervisor, and this supervisor, uh, sent me back to the town board. Um, I, I just felt I was shoveling against the tide, and I gave up on it.
You would have had to put a light at that, at that ramp to get people across.
I, look, I wanted, yes, I, I wanted a second entrance.
Yeah.
Um, and, um, I thought it was a good thing, when we came out here fifteen years ago, that was our original first site plan, to have two entrances with a light there. The county at the time did not want to approve it, it was too close to the expressway. Currently, right now, the county gave us, the, the, we needed that one form from you guys that said you would take care of the maintenance on the traffic light, that's all I needed. But I spent a few bucks to get it to that point. And when she would not hear it and sent it me back to the board, I said, I'm done, you know, I just, I tried. So, then we, we determined that, that area, that berm area that, that is currently there, it's better utilized. First, uh, there is, there is a corner, uh, the corner of the property, I don't own that, I don't know if you all know that.
But you're going, but you, now you're gonna take part of that berm down to make parking.
Yes, but before I did that, I tried to buy the corner parcel. And that, the corner parcel, I, I went up to a million dollars for that parcel to add parking. That's in a trust-
East end, uh, east-
On the east end, it's in a trust, and it can't be sold, or so I'm told, Joe Tisini owns it. So, um, it, only recently did I find out that he is going to submit an application for a Starbucks-type restaurant there, I don't know if you guys have got anything on it or not yet. But that, that's his intent. So, that's going to, that's right in my back door of the building. I see it as not helping me. So, our, our alternate was to look for parking there, uh, where we-
That's why the cross easement is important.
What?
That's why a cross easement is gonna be important.
Yeah, well, that was pretty easy to, to do, I, I don't think there's an issue there. I, I think there's a question on that parcel as to whether he will get an entrance off of fifty-eight, 'cause currently, for him, he has to come up the dr- my driveway.
Jesus fucking Christ.
What? I didn't hear that.
Did you know who it was?
Do I know what?
I know the name. Nothing, you can continue, sir, we're sorry, you got interrupted. You got interrupted by the screen.
Oh, okay, okay, uh, wh- when he has to come up the driveway, he chose that he probably would rather have an entrance off fifty-eight at the east end of his property. I don't know that he, he will get that or not, I don't, I don't know. But I know that he's gonna bring more business onto the site than what we currently have. Right now, right now, I water it, I sprinkle it, I cut it, I do everything, 'cause it looks like it's my property, but it's not.
Okay.
Mr. Browning, Mr. Brown, a quick question, um, you had just spoken about a, a problem with parking. Excuse me, but my question is, since you already own both lots, is it possible, the lines are very defined, is it possible to, to take off a piece, to add some of that parking? Since you're going to share it anyway, at least it would be dedicated legally, y- you know what I'm saying?
No, I don't.
If you take a look, are you familiar with this drawing with the green line? Okay, so, if we, if we took a portion of this and brought it in and took out the required amount of spots, it would really be the same thing, but I mean, at least, I think, 'cause you're short quite a bit.
I, I honestly, I don't follow you.
Okay, the, the second parcel, the smaller parcel, well, go ahead, Greg.
Um, I, I mean, I, I think I understand, you know, the, right now, the proposed subdivision line sort of bisects that main driveway. I believe what you're proposing is sort of alter that line where you'd actually capture, um. You know, I mean, it, right now, as I said, it's bisected down that main driveway. I think the intent, and you know, the capturing the parking could be established via just filing a, you know, parking eas- you know, reciprocal easement agreement, you know, free, you know, to allow the properties to basically be utilized like they are now, you know. The reality of it is whether-
It's mixed anyway, you're saying, it's mixed anyway.
Whether someone parks in front of the, you know, the, the Hilton or the Marriott, they're in the same parking lot, you know, it's, it's really, so as long as there's a shared parking agreement between the two properties, that will be filed on both properties, I, I think that end would be met effectively.
Okay, all right, got it, great.
Is that, that's part of the approval process?
Yeah, well, and we, we did kind of get ahead of ourselves, uh, Mr. Browning does have two applications currently pending. One is the subdivision, uh, and one is the site plan, which he sort of briefly spoke about expanded parking, so. Uh, and if there's no more questions on the subdivision, we can move forward through the, uh, to the site plan for the parking expansion, if the board's all right with that.
Sure, we'll go to item three, Browning Hotel Properties Parking Lot Expansion Site Plan.
All right, so this is the same subject property, uh, and what the current proposals are proposing. Uh, right now, the entire site currently contains two-hundred-and-forty-nine parking stalls. Uh, they are proposing to expand the parking area, uh, and install, uh, modify their existing drainage systems and redo lighting on the western portion of that property. Uh, they propose to increase the total number of stalls from two-hundred-and-forty-nine across the entire site to three-hundred-and-nine across the entire site. Uh, as Mr. Browning stated, uh, the need for the expanded parking is that for during events, they're been utilizing valet parking, there's been parking issues, uh, safety issues, people parking in the fire zones, uh, so they're proposing to add sixty parking stalls. Um, as a result of the proposed increase in the onsite parking, the depth of the existing landscaped berm along Old Country Road would be reduced from a depth of fifty feet down to ten feet. Uh, I did include pictures of the berm on page three and four of the report. Um, and I did include, if you look at figures four and five, I did ca- take a picture when I went out there of the berm and the hotel properties looking eastbound. Uh, you can see the tops of the buses in that, you know, above, you know, barely visible above the berm. And then I took a photo of the buses from the top of the berm, just to give the board a sense of perspective as to, you know, where this berm would be coming out to. Uh, so as I said, they will be reducing the size of the, the depth of the berm from approximately fifty feet down to ten feet. Um, they are proposing landscaping along the ten-foot berm that would be existing. Uh, that proposed plant, landscaping plan consists of seventy-seven oval-leaved privet hedges in the ten-foot wide buffer planted at a height of three to four feet. And the eleven existing street trees along Old Country Road are proposed to remain. Um, as a result of the proposed parking expansion, they will require several variances from the zoning board of appeals. Uh, one of them is for a reduction in the contiguous landscaped area. Town code requ- requires twenty percent of the total area, the plans propose eighteen percent. And they also exceed the maximum allowed impervious coverage, uh, the town code allows maximum seventy-five percent. They are proposing seventy-nine-point-six percent impervious coverage. Uh, I do note that the applicant should provide details of the landscaping maintenance plan, as the berm will effectively, you know, the visual screening, uh, affected by the berm will be removed. Uh, they need to make sure that those landscaped buffers are maintained in order to provide some visual screening. Um, if, they need to detail whether this area would be irrigated and how the area would be maintained. Um, expanding the parking lot will require cutting into that existing berm, as I said, along Old Country Road, as well as cutting into the hill, which is located along the site's western property boundary. Uh, the project engineers need to prepare a cut-and-fill analysis to determine how much material will need to be removed from the property, if any. And if they do need to remove material, they will require a chapter two-twenty-nine permit from the town board for the excavation and exportation of the soils. Uh, there is a proposed linear, a hundred-and-thirty linear-foot segmented block retaining wall, which is proposed along the western property boundary in order to maintain the stability of the hill along that boundary. The block wall would connect to an existing retaining wall, which is located on the northern property boundary, which is seen in figure six of the report. Uh, the plans indicate that the height of the wall will be approximately six inches high near Old Country Road and extend up to six and a half feet high where it meets the northern retaining wall. Uh, I do note that the current site plans do not account for the relocation of any of the existing pole-mounted parking lot lighting. The existing conditions map submitted by the applicant indicates that there's approximately twenty-one pole-mounted light fixtures in the parking lot, which would be affected by the reconfiguration. Uh, plans must be amended to show new locations of these lighting fixtures, and a lighting plan with photo metrics must be provided. Uh, there's a couple of, a couple of locations on the current proposal where they do have inadequate drive aisle widths, which is required to be twenty-four feet. Uh, these are in the vicinity of the Verizon pedestal, as well as near the western R P Z vault meter pit. Uh, these widths on the current plans vary from fourteen to twenty feet. Uh, redesign of these areas would be required, or these would be, uh, they must seek relief from the Z B A for these conditions. Um, I did receive comments from the town engineer that had to do with the proposed drainage design system, I did distribute them to the applicant. Uh, the app, the application has been referred to the Suffolk County D P W, as well as the Suffolk County Planning Commission. Uh, at this point, staff recommends the planning board classify the action as an unlisted action pursuant to SECR and assume lead agency, uh, recommend the issuance of a negative declaration, uh, as there are no foreseeable negative environmental impacts from the proposed parking lot expansion. Uh, adoption of a SECR resolution would allow the applicant to proceed with a zoning board of appeals application.
Greg, the privet hedges that are gonna be in place of where the, uh, the berm is, do they have leaves all year long?
Um, that I can find out, I'm not sure about that, I don't know.
Privates don't have-
I think they do, I think they do.
Privates?
Yeah, they're green, they, they, they're yellow in the summer, and then greener, so they get-
We currently have three to four hundred private hedges.
We currently have three to four hundred private hedges on property now.
Okay. Um, any other questions? Some of the utilities, if you're gonna cut that down, I guess they're gonna have to be lowered also?
The existing utilities, like the RPZ, the water lines?
No, they're not, no, they're not being, uh, not being, uh, legal.
But this is a discussion item, it's not a.
They're already at a depth, it doesn't sound like they'll need to be adjusted.
There's no change in the utilities.
Well, okay.
Did you, did you say a cut and fill analysis has to be provided?
Uh, yes, it will. They, they will be cutting into that berm. I mean, I, you know, I'm not an engineer, but it looks highly likely that they will need to be removing soils from the property in order to expand that. Uh, so the engineers need to provide a cut and fill analysis.
So how, how, how far down do you think they're gonna go?
Uh.
From the top of the berm?
Gonna go down to the existing parking lot, the greater existing parking lot.
So right, current conditions, right now, the top of the berm is elevation. Uh, the berm tops out at roughly elevation forty-nine. Uh, the proposed contours indicate that the berm would be brought down uh, at its southerly curb to approximately forty-four feet. So, I mean, they will be taking out a significant amount of it, they'll be lowering approximately five feet.
And you don't think the utilities are gonna have to be lowered?
No, the utilities are way below that, because that berm was never there.
Alright, so you're saying they're like ten feet deep right now?
I think I heard you, but.
They're, they're probably like ten feet deep.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, if the board's comfortable, we could, we could ask just for confirmation of that. We could have the project engineers just demonstrate, you know, depth to the existing utilities.
They probably did it already, that's fine.
The utilities all go underneath, uh, the sewage, it goes underneath fifty-eight. So it's underneath, so it's way, way down.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. Anybody else have any questions? Good. Okay. Next item is HK Ventures Calverton.
So HK Ventures, I did speak with the applicant today. Uh, I'm gonna ask that this one be put off till the next meeting. Um, I am trying to wrap up my review of the draft environmental impact statement, which was submitted. Um, as I informed the board of the timeline, I believe at the last meeting. Uh, the deadline for the board to deem the draft environmental impact statement as adequate for review is, I believe, June twenty-fourth. Uh, just based on the timing of our meetings, the last day that we can deem it inadequate or adequate for public review under the regulations would be our next meeting on June seventeenth. I have asked the applicant for an extension of time, just to allow us to review it. I'm not sure if that's gonna, uh, pan out, but, uh, I will prepare a report at the board's next meeting on the seventeenth for this.
Okay. Thank you.
You haven't heard that, would you have asked him for thirty days?
Uh, I, I don't know if we would need thirty days, it would probably, I, I would probably look for twenty-one days, but I, I, I'm gonna formalize something.
Stop with thirty.
Alright, thanks, Greg. Okay, so we're up to the public hearings. Um, the first public hearing tonight, um, was not properly posted, is that correct, Greg?
Uh, the property was posted, uh, the required mailings were not sent out to the neighboring properties. Uh, the applicant did speak to us this morning. Uh, so yes, we cannot have this public hearing on the Riverhead Townhomes. Uh, I did distribute, uh, prior to the meeting, resolution number sixty-three, which I would ask the board to take off the floor. Uh, that will just schedule a new date for the public hearing, uh, due to the timing of the requirements for posting in the newspaper. Uh, the next available meeting would be the board's first meeting in July, unfortunately. So we'd schedule a new public hearing for July first.
Okay. Alright, the second public hearing scheduled tonight, Crown Castle at Fresh Pond Tower consolidation.
So I believe for this application, I believe we have, uh, David Kenny, who is the attorney for the applicant. Uh, it looks like we also have a couple of their, uh, design professionals and RF analysis in the room. Um, but Mr. Kenny, I'll let you, uh, introduce the application and just present what we're, uh, considering today.
Sure. Um, I'm, good evening, board. Uh, my name is David Kenny. I'm attorney with Snyder and Snyder. I'm here today to represent the applicant, Crown Castle, in connection with his application to construct a wireless telecommunications facility at the subject property located on Fresh Pond Avenue. Um, the project also involves removing two existing facilities located nearby. I'm gonna share the screen now to show the site plan. For those of you that can see the screen. Um, here is the site plan, uh, the application again is to construct the facility on this property. Uh, but as you can see, there's two towers located nearby. A hundred and twenty-two foot tower that supports AT&amp;T, a hundred and twenty foot tower that supports Verizon and Sprint. Again, the application is to consolidate those two facilities. Uh, there's reasons necessitating that those two facilities be removed. Um, and then this proposed facility would thereby prevent the gap in coverage that would be created once those two facilities were moved. Again, the facility being proposed is a hundred and twenty feet, uh, tall, and it has co-location space for AT&amp;T, Sprint and Verizon, as well as one additional carrier. Um, there's generally four carriers in the market, so this would provide co-location space for all four carriers. The fourth carrier to be emerging in the market is expected to be dish wireless, so we would have space for them as well if they needed a co-location space in the area. On a little background history, the application has been before on the planning board for some pre-approval meetings, just to discuss the application. On the application, received a negative declaration from the town board, October twentieth, twenty twenty. Uh, it also received a special permit from the town board and a variance approval from the zoning board of appeals. Uh, the application now is before planning board for site plan approval. Um, but we're also here tonight to answer any questions that the board or the public may have, as this is a public hearing.
Okay, so this tower would go up theoretically and the other two would come down and the other two would stay in service until this is fully operational?
Correct. So the, the way that we would operate is to make sure that there would be no break in or interruption in the service. So this facility would go up and the carriers would install their equipment on there and thereafter, the two facilities that are existing would be removed. As those two existing facilities are owned by the same applicant, uh, they had management agreements to remove those two facilities, Crown Castle.
Okay, and the, there was a RF analysis done?
Yes, sir.
Considering all proposed, um, carriers on the, on the construction?
I can share that report. So there was an FCC compliance report that was, uh, shown and submitted with the application that demonstrates the facility is one hundred percent compliant with the FCC rules and regulations regarding radio frequency emissions. If you give me a second, I can share that report. Um, the actual total emission standards is a fairly low number.
Yeah, ju- just for the board's reference, uh, the RF exposure, uh, expressed in terms of maximum permissible exposure levels, as established by the FCC, uh, was demonstrated to be six point five, two five two percent of the MPE limits, or roughly fifteen point nine nine times below the maximum level. I do note that that, uh, RF analysis only analyzed Verizon, AT&amp;T and Sprint. Uh, as with all the administrative cell tower applications, if they're looking to co-locate additional towers, uh, the applicant would need to come in for additional, uh, administrative approval and they would need to demonstrate an RF report at that time, which would demonstrate the additional carrier.
Right, but he mentioned that there were potential for four on here, on, on this.
Cor- correct. They, for, if they, if they're going to add the additional fourth carrier, they would need to come in to demonstrate the RF analysis for that carrier.
Are they still proposing to have external antennas, or are they gonna move them internal?
I believe they're external antennas, Mr. Kenny?
Correct. Um, again, we.
I'm sorry, the last.
We, we had the previous meeting, there was a question regarding whether or not a unipole could be designed. Um, a unipole would require all of the antennas to be vertically stacked and it would necessitate a much taller facility. Uh, we submitted documentation to the zoning board that showed that this would not be, um, sufficient. And also at our last meeting, I believe it was discussed exactly that, because it would necessitate a taller facility, um, that that was not gonna be a preferred option.
Not preferred by you or the townspeople?
By the townspeople, because again, a taller facility, uh, would be necessitated. And again, the design that's been proposed of a monopole, um, that we're showing, I can share the screen again.
All of the last poles that have been brought before the town for the last fifteen years have all had the antenna enclosed. Um, I don't know why we're gonna break that tradition now. Uh, if it was up to me, it would be internal antennas, just like everybody else.
So, I, I can explain that. It, it just absolute, it just wouldn't work for this type of facility. The two existing facilities, again, that we are replacing, both have external antennas. Um, this is a, a fairly large coverage area. There's not a densely populated area around the facility, so it has to have a large coverage area. Um, so that type of facility is needed to have all the antennas at the same rad center. Otherwise, there would be a necessitation to have a taller facility. Uh, we did submit a report as part of the zoning, um, board of appeals application that demonstrated that this would not work. And I have a member from the RF justification team who can speak on this further, if you would like.
No, I'm sure your expert has a good explanation. Thank you, anyway.
Um, are there any generators proposed at the site?
Yes, there are. There's one generator for AT&amp;T and one generator for Verizon. They're both diesel generators. And we submitted documentation that shows that it will be a hundred percent compliant with the town's nose, uh, noise requirements. Um, cause they'll have sound, um, acoustic enclosures, uh, to prevent any kind of excess noise above ambient levels.
Why can't they share a generator?
Uh, because of the power requirements, um, so each of the care.
We lost you there for a minute, if you could start over. We lost it, huh? None of us? I don't know if you can hear us, Mr. Kenny, but we lost your, uh, your sound.
Uh, anybody else? Mr. Kent, Chris, if you're in the room, can you talk to see if this is a problem on our end?
Can you see me, can you see me and hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, good evening, uh, Chairman Carey and members of the, uh, planning board. Uh, my name is Christopher Kent, uh, from Farrell Fritz. We represent SM Calverton LLC. It's the property owner directly adjacent to the east of the proposed site. Lysom Associates, who's the owner of the property with the existing cell tower to the south. And CMAC Associates, the owner of the existing cell tower site to the west, on the west side of Fresh Pond Avenue. Uh, the secret determination made by the town board that granted the net deck, uh, an agent, site, a special permit application, was made, uh, by resolution five fifty of twenty twenty, adopted in October of twenty twenty. That neg- negative declaration was based upon the representation that the applicant will remove the two existing cell towers and replace them with one tower on the proposed site. The applicant cannot guarantee that outcome, because the two existing towers are a property that they do not own. And those owners would have the right to replace or reconstruct towers on their property if they chose. To assure that outcome, that the two existing towers are replaced by one tower, the applicant should require to consolidate the current antenna and any additional antenna onto one tower on one of the existing cell tower sites. The proposed site is not particularly suited for the proposed use, several reasons. The site is too small and cannot meet town zoning setback requirement of a hundred and twenty feet. It proposes to locate the replacement tower only seventy-two feet from its eastern, uh, boundary that it shares with our client, SM Calverton. A variance was required and the ZBA did grant the variance with condition, uh, January twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. Condition imposed by the ZBA is that the applicant remove the two existing cell towers and record a covenant against both properties where the existing cell towers are located to assure that those towers will not be reconstructed on those two sites. The special permit granted by the town board contained the same condition, that the applicant remove the two existing cell towers and record a covenant against the two properties where the existing cell towers are located, to assure that those towers will not be reconstructed on those sites. To assure the outcome that the town has determined to be in the best interest of the town, that the two existing towers are removed and replaced by one tower, the applicant should be required to consolidate its antenna onto one new replacement tower on one of the existing cell tower sites. In addition to the conditions imposed by the zoning board of appeals when granting the variance and the town board when granting the special permit, the proposed site is not particularly suited for the proposed use, for various reasons. In addition, uh, in addition to the condition imposed. The visual impacts, when traveling along Fresh Pond Avenue, and I know it well, cause I used to live in Timber Park. When traveling along Fresh Pond Avenue, approaching the proposed site from the south, entire area east, on the east side of Fresh Pond Avenue is cleared. And within the public view, from the road, for more than a quarter mile, there's in, there's inadequate buffer for the proposed cell tower on the proposed site. The existing cell tower on the CMAC parcel, which is on the west side of Fresh Pond Avenue, is adequately screened and buffered and not visible by surrounding property owners or when traveling along Fresh Pond Avenue. CMAC Associates and Lysom Associates are currently in conversation with the applicant to reach an agree, to reach an agreement that will ensure that the outcome proposed by the applicant originally, to remove the two existing towers and replace it with one tower, and that is desired by the town board and the ZBA. The desired outcome is to have the applicant remove those two existing towers, replace it with one tower. And my clients will work with the applicant to achieve the desired outcome. A letter authorizing the applicant to move forward with application. Or approval to remove the two existing towers and construct one replacement tower on one of the current cell tower sites was provided to the applicant today. And we will continue to work with the applicant to achieve the desired outcome, that the town sees and that we think in the best interest of the town. Thank you. I'm, I'm available for any questions?
Well, I. So, sorry for having, uh, lost connection earlier, but I, I rejoined the conversation.
Okay, we'll come back to you in one second, okay? So, Mr. Kent, it seems as though you're opposed to this because you want them on your client's tower. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Well, I, I, for that, for one reason, yes. For other reasons, though, the applicant made representation in its initial application that became the basis for the secret determination, which was that two towers will be removed, replaced with one tower, and that the two towers will not be, ever be reconstructed. While the property owner, that, who only, uh, who, who own the properties where the towers are located, those are pre-existing uses, and they would have the right to make application to build a tower on their side, if they chose to do so. Uh, what was, what we're, what we've made that argument to both, or we presented that, that suggestion to both the ZBA and the town board, and both the ZBA granting their variance with a condition. The town board approved of the special permit with a condition. The condition being that the tower, the existing towers be removed and a covenant placed upon the properties, the properties that host the two existing towers. There's no way for the applicant to guarantee that such a covenant would be recorded against those properties. So if, if in granting the, the variance and in approving the special permit, the town has imposed those conditions, the only way for those condition, that, that condition to be met, which would, would need to build, to remove the existing tower, build the towers and build one replacement tower on one of the existing sites. And I can guarantee you that the other, the owner of the other existing cell tower site And I can guarantee you that the other, the owner of the other existing cell tower site will not reconstruct a tower on their property. So, you will achieve the proposed, proposal made by the applicant and the desired outcome that the town imposed, uh, in granting variance and in approving the special permit, will achieve that desired outcome by having them build a replacement tower on one of the existing sites. By placing it on the proposed site, you cannot guarantee that you will have only one tower, uh, that replaces the two towers. In addition, as I stated earlier, the proposed site, if you, if you know the site, there's a car repair, to the south of the proposed site, there's an auto repair shop, there's the materials yard, Waller Stone, uh, Garden Center, and then there's the proposed site. And if you're traveling north on Fresh Pond Avenue, that proposed, that site with the tower will be visible from Fresh Pond Avenue when traveling north for quite a distance, at least a quarter of a mile, if not more, as you're traveling north on Fresh Pond, if you're familiar with Fresh Pond Avenue. And even some of the photos that were submitted by the applicant attached to its application show the, show the, uh, the, the site coming north on Fresh Pond Avenue. And you can clearly see the tower from those photographs where the tower would be located. So, I think all those are, and for the reasons that we are now working with the applicant to reach an agreement to remove both existing towers and construct a replacement tower on one of the existing sites, uh, while those, while we're in discussion to reach that agreement, and we hope to, we hope to reach that agreement. There's also litigation that's been commenced by Crown Castle against the town for imposing the, which is on both the zoning board of appeals, decision, grant the variance, and, uh, the condition imposed on the approval of the special permit. So, I would ask that the planning board, since the variance has got the condition, it can't be satisfied, it would be very difficult to satisfy. I would at least ask that the planning board not grant the site plan approval until it's gone, that the condition by the ZBA on the granting of the variance be, uh, be met.
Right, but if we, if this board did that, which I think it's outside of our authority, we would be forcing them to do business with you as opposed to the people who own this, this application here. It sounds like a business squabble to me.
Well, I'm asking that, that if, if you're, if you are, if your site plan is gonna be subject to the condition that was granted by the zoning, the, the condition imposed by the zoning board of appeals when granting the variance, all variances must be, uh, met prior to granting, uh, or approving a site plan. Then, then the condition imposed by the zoning board of appeals, also the condition imposed by the town board when granting the special permit, this condition won't be satisfied in order for a site plan to be, you know, finally approved. You could put the site plan, but the condition must be met before the, before the structure would be constructed.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Kenny, you back on with us?
Yes, thank you for having me back on. Sorry for the connection issues.
So, my question was on the generators. Why couldn't they share one generator?
Um, so, they, they need two, they have two separate power requirements and they need to independently operate. So, Verizon has an issue requiring a power outage. They can't rely on AT&T, a competitor, to support their equipment. It's just, uh, there's also FCC requirements, uh, requiring that they each have independently backup power storage.
That's not accurate, sir. I have to disagree with you.
Uh, um, my understanding is, is that's exactly why two generators are being proposed, is they have different power requirements.
I know for a fact that, that AT&T, T-Mobile, and Verizon share generators at a single site.
That, that may happen at smaller powered facilities, like a gas facility, and it does happen at some facilities. But this facility, the reason is being proposed, they have different power requirements. I have, uh, the applicant's engineer who can discuss more of the, uh, generators being proposed. But again, both generators have shown in, in the reports that we submitted that they comply with the town's noise ordinance and they're being.
Well, it's, it's not so much the noise ordinance, it's planning, because as you said, there's room here for four carriers. So, that means there could be potentially four generators on here, four diesel generators and four diesel storage tanks all on this one property. And when the power goes out, they're all gonna come on. So, that's the only reason why I bring it up.
I understand any future generators that be proposed by co-located carriers would obviously have to go, uh, reviewed by the town. Um, but these both generators that are proposed, uh, they've been reviewed by the town and, and they were part of, of the net debt. Um, and we believe that, you know, the reasons that we're proposing them are actually proper planning reasons so that we can make sure that they're independently operating. I, I understand the, the cost for concern for having four diesel generators, but right now, there's only two being proposed.
Uh, I just had a que, the, do you know the storage capacities of the diesel fuels that will be required for each generator?
Um, Neil, Neil McDonald is our, is our engineer, if he could speak to that?
Sure. The, the generators typically will have a belly tank underneath them, um, and, uh, I believe it's, uh, two hundred and fifty gallons or less.
And is that for each generator?
Yes.
All right, so, uh, the only reason I ask is, cause if there's a, there's a certain threshold, I believe it requires an article twelve permit from the Suffolk County Department of Health Services. Um, so I would just ask that you clarify that and just clarify the amount of total gallonage on the site to clarify whether you need that approval or not.
It, it's actually on the document I'm showing. The combined total is four hundred and twenty gallons. And it'll be in compliance with the eleven hundred gallon threshold.
All right, thank you.
What's the fresh, what's the cross access? Fresh Pond and what?
Sam. Well, there's South Road there too, Tipper Park, right?
Yeah, I mean, the, when you say cross access, what do you mean? The?
Cross Pond Avenue and where?
Um, I mean, Fresh Pond, it, the, the location of the site is roughly, I would say, in the middle of Fresh Pond Avenue, between Middle Country Road and Sound Avenue. Um, there, there's one residential property located to the north, but there's no cross streets in the immediate vicinity.
It's, uh, just south of the Apple Orchard.
So, if, if you can see on my screen, this is a bird's eye view of the area. Um, as you can see, there's actually no, uh, residential properties nearby, except there is a residential property to the north. Um, the, the units of which I believe are here tonight. Um, that is located approximately a hundred and seventy-five feet north of the proposed facility. Um, and again, the photos that we were taking, we show that the closest residential units here, um, they cannot have any accurate view of the facility. They could not see the balloon when we did the balloon float. And if I can go through some of the balloons, we do believe that there are parts of Fresh Pond Ave. that have adequate buffering. Um, but there are ac- actual places on Fresh Pond Avenue that you can see the facility. We do show that in our report. However, as we showed before, um, there's limited residential properties in this area. And what our focus was more for the areas up, where they have visibility that are close to residential properties. Um, viewpoint number seventeen is a really good example, where you can see, once you go further away, both facilities are visible above the treetops in some views, uh, by residential properties. If I can just get to view seventeen real quick. Um, and this shows exactly what we're trying to accomplish, which is take away the visibility where you would see two towers and place that with the ability of one tower. And again, this is, as you get further away, while there may be some visibility on Fresh Pond Ave. of this facility, um, that's not necessarily near any residential properties. And the one residential property that we are near, and they currently have the existing facility located across the street, um, and we are willing to provide additional landscaping along the, uh, property boundary, um, as good neighbor gesture to provide any additional buffering that we can. Uh, but again, we believe that on the overall viewpoint for the overall town, uh, we are supplying a project that would remove two facilities and put up off one. I, I know there's been comments and discussions stating that the property owners are threatening to build two if we remove the, uh, two existing facilities. Uh, but we have been clear in all of our submissions and, and in the litigation, we believe that the town code does not allow them to build new towers after we remove the existing facilities without obtaining special permit approval and approval, uh, and a compliance with the town code's, uh, special provisions on wireless facilities.
Are you actively negotiating with them?
Uh, we, we're seeing all, all possibilities to resolve the situation we need to consolidate the facilities and there's issues with both of the properties where we haven't been able to reach long-term agreements and there's jeopardy of these facilities being put offline without having a replays. So, in, in the aspect of trying to make sure that the public and those relying on these services don't see any interruption, we are pursuing that, but nothing has been finalized. Um, we are still pursuing this application and, uh, we're presenting it to the board, uh, for this proposal.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is there anyone else from the public that wants to, uh, provide any comments or have any questions? Anyone from the public? I'll come back to you, Joe, I'm sorry.
I do. Can you hear me?
Yes. Just identify yourself, please, for the record.
Uh, my name is Donna Bajroji, and we are at three three eight Fresh Pond Avenue. We're the, uh, the only house adjacent north to the proposed site. So, you know, I know we're just one house that's in the area. There's a tower across the street, you know, that'll come down and they wanna put up a new one over here. You know, and there's no guarantee that there won't be the other tower that goes up, so, you know, we really don't want two towers next to our house, and I'm sure everyone in the area doesn't wanna have two towers right next to each other. But whatever legal battle that's going on between them, you know, I don't, I don't know enough about it. Um, you know, I just know that I just, I don't wanna end up with two towers next to my house. Um, the tower that, if, if the proposed site gets approved, right, and the new tower goes up, I mean, I know, you know, just like with the tower that's across the street, right, how do we know it's not gonna fall or whatever? And then the same thing with the new tower. I know, you know, Mr. Kenny, you talk about a breakpoint, you know, whatever, I think it's like forty-five feet, but what if that doesn't work, you know, and I, you know, it's just, it's literally right there, you know, I mean, if there's any kind of damage that happens, you know, let's say just for some freak reason, right, it falls and, you know, all the trees and landscaping, or something happens, you know, who's gonna replace all that? And then all the damage, it, it just doesn't make sense in my mind. And like I said, maybe I just don't know enough, but, you know, why can't you just work with the one that's right there, you know? So, I, I know this has been a long battle and a huge project, and you have all your reasons and stuff, but, you know, I just, I just don't understand why you can't just work with that tower. You know, I just, you, wouldn't you have rather spent your time and energy? Yeah, I, and I'm not telling you how to do your job, but, you know, like, it would have been easier, I think, to just work with them and get whatever modifications you need technically than to have to go through all of this of getting this one through, you know?
Well, that certainly sounds logical, but it sounds like also they're in some kind of business dispute, so.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, no, I, I do understand. That's why I say, you know, I'm not, you know, we, we bought this house last year. I'm sure this thing's been going on for a long time. You know, so, you know, whatever, you know, legal battle that's going on, you know, like I said, I don't know, but, you know, I'm just, I'm just thinking, you know, simple, you know, lamest terms, like, I don't, I just don't understand enough. You know, it just, I don't know.
But, so, you're, you're opposed to the new tower. You'd rather see, rather than go on the existing tower?
Yes.
Okay, we understand.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wanna speak? Anyone else?
May I just respond to a couple of those comments?
Excuse me?
May, may I just respond to a couple of those comments?
Sure.
Um, I just, again, I wanted to point out that the facility is located, uh, its entire height, a hundred percent of the height from their property. So, i- in the off chance that the breakpoint that we've designed to reduce the fall zone radius does not work, the tower would fall completely within the property lines. So, that is a design feature that's not included in either of the existing facilities. But, just, just in case, you know, trying to, trying to provide additional information to comfort you on that one fear, um, that the facility has been designed to reduce its fall zone radius to be well within the property lines. But even if that wouldn't work, um, the facility has been set back from your property at, uh, over a hundred percent the height of the tower to make sure that we have the ability. Um, so if it didn't work, it would fall down completely within your property lines, within our property lines.
All right, thank you. I just, I just, uh. Go ahead, Mr. Kent.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, uh, it, that would not be the case with the property to the east, which is owned by SM Calverton. Close tower is only seventy-two feet from that boundary line, and the code requires a hundred and twenty feet. Variance was granted with a condition, so they need to satisfy the condition in order for the variance to be approved. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, so, that, I just, that is correct. They do meet the required setbacks for the northern property boundary as well as the western property boundary along Fresh Pond Avenue. They require the dimensional relief from the zoning board for the eastern property setback as well as the southern property setback. Um, that's where that breakpoint came into play for the, the two setbacks that they didn't meet.
Okay.
And, and I, I have to clarify one thing. Both of the existing facilities are on parcels that they do not meet setbacks and also need variances. And neither of them have breakpoints. So, I understand there may be cause for concern for this facility on falling on a neighboring property that's been designed with a breakpoint to reduce the fall zone radius. And there's an existing facility next door to this property owner that doesn't include the same, that could have the same, uh, fear that he's having of falling over on his property currently exists.
All right, thank you. Uh, Joe, you had something?
Just a question, Greg. You brought up earlier that the, uh, applicant had to get a special permit from the town board.
Correct.
And the town board did a secret?
Correct.
Why is it we have to do it again?
You don't have to do it again. The town board, and it was a type one action.
Right.
Uh, the town board initiated a coordinated review, uh, back in July of twenty twenty. Uh, when they did that, we presented it to the board. The planning board at that time agreed to let the town board have lead agency on this application. Um, they issued the negative declaration, uh, and that negative declaration and a coordinated review, uh, would be binding through the, the review of the application. So, the, the planning board is not charged with any secret lead agency duties.
You're just saying in your recommendation that you, that we adopt the resolution classifying the action as a type one and circulated request.
Uh, so, th- those are, those are old reports. Those are probably from reference from when the application was initially submitted. That was probably addressed to the town board. Um, so, yeah, the, the planning board.
We don't have to, that might.
Correct, secret, secret is done on this.
Okay.
Application.
Okay, anyone else wanna speak on this application?
I move we close the hearing.
Somebody's got a hand up, I think.
Do they?
Yeah, I do. Chris Kent. I just wanted to, I mean, Dave, Dave just brought up another point that, that mentioned that just because the existing towers are located on substandard lot doesn't mean we should approve the next tower on the substandard lot. The idea of, of the code is to discontinue non-conforming uses and try to approve conforming uses. So, the idea would be to have the replacement tower located on a site that could meet all the zoning requirements.
Okay, thank you. So, Joe, you made a motion to close the public hearing?
To close the public hearing.
A second motion.
A motion made and seconded to close the public hearing for Crown Castle at Fresh Pond. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is closed.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, board.
Thank you. Okay, we're up to the resolutions. Are there any comments from the public on resolutions before we take them up? Any public comment on resolutions? Anyone up there, Chip? No? Anyone who wants to speak before we take up the resolutions, please unmute yourself. Okay, we'll go to the resolutions.
I'll move resolution number fifty-nine for forty-eight Cromer Avenue, granting preliminary approval for a site plan. So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded to approve resolution fifty-nine for forty-eight Cromer Avenue. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm against it.
Opposed? Aye.
Aye.
All right, so I'll call the roll here. Um, George, your vote?
Again, I'm against it. No.
George is no.
Nay.
Dick O'Day?
Nay.
No. Joe Bear?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, Ed Dennis Sesc?
Yes.
Yes, and my vote is no. So, resolution's defeated three to two. Number two on the agenda.
I'll move resolution sixty, Browning Properties LLC, the minor subdivision. So moved.
Second a motion.
Motion made and seconded to approve resolution sixty, uh, classifying it type two action for secret for Browning Hotel Properties subdivision. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution's approved.
I'll move resolution number sixty-one, authorizing the.
I'll move resolution number sixty-one, authorizing a public, a notice of public hearing for two lot, minor subdivision for Browning Properties.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve resolution sixty-one to schedule a public hearing for a minor subdivision, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Resolution is approved.
Sixty-two, I'll take the parking lot here, Browning Hotel Properties LLC, parking lot expansion site plan.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve resolution sixty-two for unlisted action, Browning Hotels parking lot expansion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Resolution is approved. And we do have a fifth one on the agenda tonight to reschedule the public hearing for Riverhead Townhomes, which is resolution sixty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to schedule a public hearing for Riverhead Townhomes, the resolution sixty-three, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Resolution's approved. Any public comment on any matter in front of the planning board? Any public comment?
Just want to ask, has the applicant been advised and had properly mailed and posted and all that now?
The, every time we schedule a public hearing, an applicant is given a instruction sheet, it gives them instructions on how to post the property, how to mail the property, and they're given a list of properties to mail said notice to, so, yes.
They received all that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else from the public?
Comment, please?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, Martin Settle, representing forty-eight Cromer LLC. I am requesting that you provide your written reasoned elaboration under SECR hard look as to the specific reason, the denial of the application. Under SECR, you are required to provide a written reasoned elaboration, those reasons cannot be just because you think it's too much gas. I want a written reasoned elaboration of the SECR as to your findings, which we will utilize in our Article seventy-eight. Thank you.
Sure, you're welcome. Uh, anyone else from the public? Okay, minutes of May twentieth?
I'll move the minutes of May twentieth.
Second a motion.
Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes of May twentieth, twenty-twenty-one, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, minutes are approved, other business? Just have a question for Jefferson, where are we with the master plan update?
We finally have a revised contract with AKRF, it's now, not throwing Bob Kozakovich under the bus, but it's in his office now being reviewed, and once that gets approved, then it'll go to the supervisor and back to the town board. In the meantime, we are updating the website as we speak, we're not waiting for the contract for that, so that should be relaunched in the next week or two, I would say more than the lines of two weeks to get that up and running, and with that, we'll come along with the community survey. The public meetings cannot happen until we get the revised contract done.
Okay, so, is that, is that going to push back the overall completion date?
Yeah, we're looking at September of next year.
September of twenty-two.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, anything, any other business from the board?
No, sir.
Okay, next meeting is Thursday, June seventeenth at three P.M. Motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Okay, thank you, have a good night.
Have a nice weekend, everybody.